Welcome, everyone. I, Councilmember Tole Martz, call the Tuesday, January 28th, City Council Services Safety and Parks Committee Meeting to Order. First up is public comment. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There's a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation in council question and answer period on tonight's agenda items. Members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you are on the phone, press star three. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you're in the room, did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. Wait to see for a moment to see if anyone wishes to raise their hand physically or virtual. Chris, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Chair Martz, no one has previously signed up to speak, and there are no virtual hands raised at this time.
All right. As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isiquawawat.gov. Next up on the agenda, we have approval of minutes. And we have two sets of minutes to approve. So we will first take the September 30th, 2024 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I had moved to approve the minutes from September 30th, our Services Safety and Parks Committee meeting.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Now the minutes of the October 15th meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to adopt the Services Safety and Parks Committee minutes from October 15th, 2024.
Second?
Any discussion? Bearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item COM 0079, Inclusive Housing Investment Pool, IHIP, application with our own Jen Davis Hayes, Economic Development Manager. Take it away, Jen.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. So we are going to be joined by two staff members of ARCH virtually. They had to be at a council meeting in Bellevue the same evening, so appreciate their ability to do two things in one evening. And so we can make them participants, that would be great. And so, sorry, we need to press share twice. So we are here to talk about, not work, let me try again, sorry. There we go. To talk about, as you mentioned, IHIP, so the Inclusive Housing Investment Pool. And so tonight, we're here to present a recommendation from the administration for the LEO, that's the life, oh, Life and Enrichment Options, Emily House, for funding $482,687 from our IHIP program. And also to gather any input or additional information that you may believe is necessary for us to present to full council for this, or to have for full council to consider approving For every housing discussion we have, we bring up the housing continuum. And so this IHIP is, because of the source of funding, these are the types of housing that would be eligible for the types of, for the types of housing for affordable housing. So for those who were not part of the creation of this, the Inclusive Housing Investment Pool, IHIP, was created at the end of 2023. And we worked throughout that year with council and are looking at our plans to determine what the funding priorities are. Preservation of existing housing, transit-oriented development, and community-based affordable housing projects were the top three. This project hits those, the two of them, and is pretty close to frequent transit service as well. Now, again, as a reminder, this funding is from our 0.1% sales tax, which has a requirement, which is the HB 1590. So you must serve individuals with 60% AMI or lower, and then you also must make sure that you serve one of the following populations. So again, this project meets those requirements. This, we added an, oh, I forgot to mention, we added a new slide into this PowerPoint. So for those of you who are following, it has been updated to the, to the packet. This is a slide that originally had, I want to keep in here, just to mention that for IHIP itself, we have not spent anything out of it. This is the first application we've had. So there is about $2 million allocated from the 21 through 24 timeframe of collection. And we anticipate about $1 million each, each year for the next two. But this slide, as a request from Deputy Council President D. Michelle, to ask, okay, what are those things that are the revenue and expenses for not just IHIP, but for the affordable housing taxes? And so, right here, again, you'll see stars because we are still doing year-end adjustments for expenses and revenue. We haven't gotten the full revenue collected, and that should say through 2011, '24, sorry, just noticed that. But, so again, we had anticipated a $5 million set aside for the TOD and IHIP of about $2 million. And so, and then, in the budget that you guys passed, that council passed, we have about $1 million a year, so about $2 million. So, talks about the expenses we plan to spend that on. And so again, this was part of the policy document that was approved by City Council in December. So based, instead of us going at this on our own, we coordinated very closely with ARCH to go at the same, to have the application coordinated with their Housing Trust Fund application time period. And so, instead of having applicants do four different kinds of applications for, you know, four different funds, basically, they could fill out the endendum, which had our questions that we were important to look at. And then ARCH staff, Patrick here on the screen, did the initial staff review, provided that information to a review committee, which included two economic vitality commissioners. So thank you to Chris Richly and Barb Pexa, who spent time looking over the 60 documents that we received. And then myself and Community Planning and Development Director, Minnie Dalawal, were the staff. We then presented to the administration, and then we are here at the committee. And so I'm going to pass this off to ARCH to share the next few slides, and I'm not sure if it's going to be Lindsey or Patrick.
Great. Patrick is going to begin speaking, and I just want to give a heads up that we apologize in advance if we have to get called over to go present at the council here in Bellevue. So apologies in advance, but we're also very happy to answer follow-up questions after the meeting if they come up after we leave. So, Patrick, tip it over.
So I want to talk a little bit about the application that Isiquaw received for the IHIP funds. The application came from Life and Enrichment Options, a nonprofit based in Isiquaw, to acquire an existing group home serving individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And this is for the acquisition, they applied to IHIP for approximately $490,000 of IHIP funds. They also applied to ARCH for about $490,000. And then, an application also to the State Department of Commerce. Their proposal is to support four households earning incomes between 30% and 40% of the area median income. And the funds that they've requested will be to acquire this existing, existing property and continue to operate it in the long term to continue to serve future, future residents with intellectual and developmental disabilities. This proposal really aligned well with the preservation of the existing affordable housing, as well as a community partner, and also aligned with many elements in the City of Isiquaw's comprehensive plan. The total project cost is approximately $1.9 million. And again, a quarter of the funds are requested from IHIP, a quarter from ARCH, which have been recommended by the ARCH Executive Board, and then nearly $1 million from the State of Washington, which has been awarded to the project. So we're doing a really good job of leveraging the IHIP dollars with other available sources to preserve this housing in the community.
Thank you, Patrick. The other part of the application was a request for, on, oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm going ahead too much. So, so we do recommend this capital funding. Again, these are the reasons why, we talked about preservation, we talked about serving a lower than even it was required for the affordable housing, and it's within walking distance of frequent transit service, right across the street here. And we're really excited that, again, they were able to leverage other money to preserve this housing availability. Part of the application as well was not only for capital, but for ongoing annual operating requests of $55,000 a year. After looking at that recommendation, or that application, we, we, the review committee, have recommended not to fund the annual operations. We believe there are other sources for that, and ARCH and city staff have volunteered to help them look into that. I know that ARCH is working very closely with them about, with their staff to, you know, be able to act, to apply for other grants. But we really felt that the IHIP, as we've heard from council before, should be focused on actually preserving and creating, not spending money on studies or other things that may not be, you know, what is intended for from this council, to actually create housing. We have very limited funds, and so that, again, is our recommendation, but we're more than willing to hear more about it. I'm going to turn it back to Patrick.
So, yeah, I can, I can jump in here. So the recommendation includes some specific things that would typically come with an ARCH funding recommendation. So it includes the amount of funds, the proposed terms of the dollars, and many of what are now standard conditions that come with ARCH awards that ensure the funds are going to preserve that affordability long-term, and the dollars are used for their intended purpose. So those are all laid out in the memo and would align with the set of conditions that we've also recommended for the ARCH set of funds that accompany IHIP. Just one final note about this also, this is a new program for Isiquaw. We have experience administering city funds through your ARCH, through your ARCH account held in the city of Bellevue. And so we're, we're open to using that as a way to help you administer these funds as well, which would, would allow us to do the administration of the contract. But that is, is, we're happy to answer questions about how that would work.
And I was just going to mention that as our recommendation as well, to rely on their expertise to manage the contract, and that would work the same way as our Housing Trust Fund dollars, where we would transfer the money and they would, you know, obviously keep us informed and be part of that, but utilize their expertise for managing. So we're back to the discussion questions, or direction needed.
Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. First, a question for Lindsey or Patrick. Do you, do you know if this house is named the Emily House after Emily Ernst, Mike Ernst's daughter, or not?
I, I do believe that it's, does, the name is from a prior owner or current owner and a previous resident of the home, yes.
Oh, okay. Mike Ernst was a longtime board member, and one of the houses was named the Mike Ernst House that opened in the West Isiquaw Highlands in 2022. So I was, I was just curious. When, when you said, Patrick, when you said that there would be four, I think you said families or living units that would be supported by this house, could you clarify that a little bit? Is it just for individuals with special needs that would be living in the house with a caretaker to help with day-to-day activities?
Yeah, that's correct. It's a five-bedroom home. There are four people with intellectual and developmental disabilities who live there, who are income-qualified. The fifth bedroom is lived in by a caretaker who is not an income-qualified, and so our proposal would characterize that unit as a common area unit, so meaning the person does not need to be income-qualified to, to reside there, though they do, they are included under the rental assistance contract of the, for the operations of the home.
Okay. No, I appreciate that, thank you. Yeah, I helped break ground on the first Rose Finnegan house in the early 2000s and fully support this program. The Challenge Day race that was put on by Rotary here in town and now in Snoqualmie helps support the, the ongoing work of this group. And I don't have any further questions, other than to say that this is a need that Rose and Leo Finnegan saw in our community, and filled it by doing a mom-and-pop nonprofit, in essence, that grew and grew to what we see today, which involves now five houses and now going on to the sixth house, to give opportunities for people with special needs, the opportunity to live independently in our communities. I love seeing the group walk around downtown together and go to Conscious on the Green together, and just enjoy Isiquaw for everything that it has to offer, because they have the opportunity to live in our great, in our great city. So, thank you to Leo for all their work, and thank you to ARCH for the hard work to make this happen. I think it's fantastic we're able to put in one quarter of the funds and get the other three partners, or two partners, to devote the other three quarters of the funding. It's a fine example of a partnership to fill a need in our community, so thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Council President, do you have any questions right now?
Um, so I'm, I understand, and I love what Councilmember Joe said about Leo and Rose Finnegan, because they really were pioneers in this area. And I know that Leo, Life and Enrichment Opportunities, is an expert at fundraising and finding those grants. But what happens if they are not able to sustain these operating costs for this, for this facility? And also, do the residents pay even part of the funds, or are these 100% subsidized housing situations?
Yeah. I'll start with answering your second question of residents are asked to pay one-third of their income for rent, and then the remaining portion of their rent is paid through Section 8 contract, contract for their, for their units. And then regarding the, the operating expenses, I think that fundraising is a, is a portion of that. I think that the, you know, there are other grant and contract opportunities available that Leo's seeking, and I do think they're building their staff to be able to successfully access those funds and support, continue to support the residents.
I apologize, we were just called over, but we, again, we'd be happy to follow up with any other questions by email. Thanks for having us.
Thank you, Lindsey and Patrick. Good luck with your next one.
Thank you.
Jen, I have a question. So this is already home for developmentally disabled folks. So what, what do we get for the $482,000 then, if it's already?
So it's preservation, because they, the, the current operators of the group home want to retire, and so they would, could potentially sell the house on the open market and get their $2 million, or whatever it would be, and walk away, and these four individuals would be without housing. There has been talk with, from Leo House of looking at that house, maybe even being able to add a fifth room, so in the, you know, having another person live there, so that would also help with their operations. But yeah, it's, it's, they want to retire, so.
And is, so Leo would run the home?
Yes.
Are they okay with the ARCH attachment C terms?
Mm-hmm.
Which were added after the initial conversation?
Yeah, I mean, they, yes, they, they have been in communications, and they also, again, they have received an award from the state, and so they have those terms as well, from the state.
Okay.
Department of Commerce.
Okay. Well, this would be a point where I will ask again whether there's any public comment on this particular item. Any members of the public, either here in the room with us, or remote, have an interest in making a comment on this before we make a final decision, I'll say again, it's star three on your phone, or look for a hand icon. That may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. Chris, any indication that anyone wishes to speak to this item?
Chair Martz, there are no online attendees, but I do see some hands raised in the, in the audience.
All right. Well then, let me mention that public comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions we make. During audience comments, members of the public are invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to city programs, projects, services, or events. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment will have the opportunity to do so. Please direct comments to the whole council, not individuals. While this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. So when recognized, state your name, address, and relationship to the city, e.g., resident, property owner, business owner. Be clearly and pause frequently and limit your comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually, well, I'll read the part even though we don't have any virtual right now, and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isiquawawat.gov. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior such as shouting, booing, collapsing, and stomping feet will not be permitted. If a speaker is out of order, the presiding officer will direct the speaker to return to his or her seat. Virtual attendees may direct staff to mute their microphone. If the speaker does not comply, the presiding officer may take a recess to restore order. If disruption to the meeting occurs and order cannot be restored, the presiding officer may proceed to use one of the options provided for in RCW 42.30.050 to ensure orderly continuation of the meeting. Again, public comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. City takes comments seriously, and we thank members of the public for taking the time to address us during these meetings. With that, we will take our first commenter. You need to press the.
Hello. Okay, great. Thank you, Chair, Councilmember Martz, and all the other council members for the opportunity to provide public comment on this issue. I think this is a great project. Leo is a great local.
Can I interrupt and ask you to state your name?
Oh, sorry.
For the record, thank you.
Sorry, my name's Kelly Jiang, and I'm a resident of Isiquaw and homeowner in Tallis. So I think the IHIP program, it's super exciting to see this kind of get off the ground, and I couldn't think of a better first project to, to be, you know, the one to kick off this project, this program. And I think the partnership with a local organization, Leo, is fantastic. They've done a lot over the last 40 years to, you know, serve as a real model in the community of how individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities can, you know, be a great part of our community here in Isiquaw. Additionally, I'm interested to learn more about what the pipeline is for new projects in the program. You know, this is a great first project, and it's also really great to hear that, you know, we're leaning on the expertise and, you know, staffing within ARCH, which is a great, you know, regional collaboration. So I'm excited to learn more about how, you know, we can find other of these types of projects to support super-low-income residents, veterans, formerly homeless people, individuals with developmental disabilities, and, you know, make sure that everyone has a place here in Isiquaw. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have one other person, or two?
Thank you, Chair Martz. Last time I blew it, so let me introduce myself, Jason Voice, 700 Front Street South, and I am a resident. So let me second what Kelly just said, that was fantastic. But also, as someone who has worked a little bit with ARCH, what a great outfit, what a great organization. I was not aware of this Leo, or these houses that, sounds like we have four, this would be the fifth. And so I thank Councilmember Joe for giving us a little background about the Finnegans, I had never heard of that. So, again, great work, it seems like a pretty fair trade, again, to Councilmember Joe's point. If we provide a quarter of the funding, two other partners would provide three-quarters of that funding. Again, so I applaud the effort by ARCH, by Leo, by IHIP, and looking forward to seeing what you guys will do with it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else wishing to speak? Bert, any chance we've added anybody online?
Still no online attendees, Chair.
All right. Shall we go through the three questions? Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the, also, personal privilege to compliment our ARCH staff before they had to go. My comments didn't necessarily stay contained to questions, but I appreciate the, the personal privilege and leeway that you gave me there. I don't have any questions about the, the recommendation here. I think, again, it's a, a great project to put a quarter in and have other partners join us. We always do get that question, what has ARCH done for us recently, or what does ARCH do? And I think that we need to be quite vocal about, this is what ARCH does to help preserve housing for the 0% to 40% AMI, and that housing does not get built unless you have a nonprofit or other partner that's willing to come in and do it. And so I applaud the administration and Jen Davis Hayes for trying to seek out and find those opportunities, and then gain partners that could work with us to preserve this essential housing in our community. I don't necessarily think I need any additional information for this. I believe that it's appropriate to have ARCH and Leo, the Leo House organization, go out and get the, the everyday administrative funding for this. We bring something to the table, and they bring their expertise to the table in terms of how to take care of these places and take care of the, the citizens that are, are living there in a, in a cost-effective way. And I think it's a good partnership to make sure that all parties have some type of interest and skin in the game through this process. So that concludes my comments, thank you.
Deputy Council President?
Thank you. I, I think this is a wonderful project. And so I had the great privilege of serving with Leo Finnegan on the At Work Board of Directors. And he also served with me at the Metro Transit Committee Advisory Group. And Leo was also a member of the King County Developmental Disability Advisory Group. So he and I did a lot of carpooling back in the day. And one thing in our conversations that we talked about was, and Rose and Leo, of course, their son is a person with developmental disabilities, and he shared with me the concern that most parents who have children with developmental disabilities have, and that is, how do they get along after I am gone? And so this housing fits and meets a need for that community of people that is just unbelievably urgent. I believe, if I read it correctly in the packet we received, there are 39,000 people with developmental disabilities in Washington State who do not have stable housing and do not have access to this. So this is a wonderful thing that the city of Isiquaw has done, working with the Finnegans to get this kind of housing available in our community. I'd also like to remind everybody that the IHIP fund did come from capturing from King County, the 1/10th, the 1% tax revenues, which we would have been paying anyway, but they would have been going to King County, and instead, they've come to us and provided this wonderful pool of money that I think we are putting to really, really good causes. So thanks to the staff for bringing this forward, and thanks to ARCH for the work that they did on this project as well. So I do not have any concerns about this recommendation, I think this is a great preservation project. I also went online and looked at maps to find out exactly where the house is. Perfect location for this kind of, of a housing solution within easy reach to so many different amenities in our community. So everything about this project just seems right, and I think it will be great. I don't have any questions. I don't have any questions or any additional information that I need, and I hope that we can send this forward to the council and get this project moving. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. So I am in support of this motion and taking this back to the full council. I'm particularly excited to see that it's 0% to 40%. We so rarely get opportunities to move the needle at anything less than 80% or 90%. So it's very exciting. I, you know, hold Leo in high regard. I think they'll do a good job. So I don't have any additional questions. So I think it sounds like we are 3 to 0 in support of sending it back. Is there, I probably did know this, but was, there is a date certain for it going back, right? The second meeting in February?
I think.
It says February 24th.
Yeah, February 24th.
And we'd recommend consent if the committee is right with.
Yep. Yep. Head nods all around. All right.
Thank you very much. Appreciate this.
Yeah, thank you, Jen. Appreciate it. So with that, we'll move on to the second item, which is 0084, 2025 Arts Grant Recommendations by Amy Dukes, our arts program administrator.
Thank you for having me here this evening. I am here to present to you the 2025 Arts Grant Recommendations. These are the 2025 Arts Grant Recommendations as proposed by the Arts Commission, and we'll share them with you. The direction that we are seeking is just for the award and allocation of this year's arts grant. So I want to provide a little bit of quick background about the arts grants. I think you all are fairly familiar with them. It's an annual program that the Arts Commission does facilitate through the arts program. And the primary reason that we do the arts grant program is to provide meaningful arts engagement and opportunities for our community and visitors, to celebrate our community's cultural diversity, to cultivate a creative and vibrant arts community in Issaquah, and of course, to support our local arts organizations and artists and creative economy. A few years ago, the Arts Commission decided to formalize the program a little bit more and create some different categories so that we could better manage the grant requests. And so the arts partnerships are one category that we will be talking about this evening. Those are really general operating support provided to our Issaquah-based nonprofit arts organizations that really have arts and culture as their primary singular mission. So that's the business that they're in. We do allow up to 10% of their operating budget to be requested, or up to $25,000. This is a change from 2024. Previously, we allowed up to $35,000 requests, and it was one of the changes that the Arts Commission recommended due to decreased funding in this category for 25. And then the other category that we'll be presenting recommendations for this evening is arts projects. These are projects that can come from really any type of organization, informal group, group of artists, an individual artist with an idea that provides a project that provides benefit to Issaquah residents and visitors. And so this year, the max request in this category is $5,000. We did break it into two categories and asked, hey, if you could get $2,500, what could you do for that? And so we did have some groups that actually proposed projects for $2,500. So that was another sort of strategy to manage having less funding. And the Arts Commission uses three different criteria to evaluate the applications. The first primary criteria is public benefit. So they're really looking for projects and programs that provide a meaningful engagement in arts and culture, and they want the program to reach, or collectively, they want the recommendations to reach diverse audiences. So a lot of the projects and programs reach very broad audiences, and then there are certainly projects that are intended to reach an underserved group, like seniors living in senior living centers. The second criteria is artistic value. So we really want to support programs that are well-conceived, compelling, and again, have art as the primary component and reason for the project, and that they're providing a really meaningful arts engagement opportunity for our community. And then third, the final criteria is feasibility and managerial capacity. So we want to make sure that the money that we're investing is actually used well and that the budget of the program or project is realistic and clear, and that the project has endeavored to receive community involvement or support in its creation.
No, that's right. Amy, thank you for coming tonight and appreciate your constant work in the arts arena. Could you touch on where we get the money from? And, you know, the citizens might not know how the money gets to us, and if you could touch on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Joe, because I just assume everyone knows that, but that's actually not the case. So the arts program in Issaquah is funded through, primarily through admissions tax, which is collected from our movie theater, Regal, and also from the small movie theater, Big Picture. That is a small tax on each individual movie ticket, and that amount, as you might be able to imagine, has decreased over the years, pretty significantly, obviously, during the pandemic. And while we actually have had a decent year in 2024, it is still about a 50% reduction to what it was at its height. So just to give you an idea, we're coming in just under $200,000 a year from the admissions tax. The arts program also does get funded through a small percentage of capital improvement projects that the city does, and that amount goes to public art. So this program is funded entirely through admissions tax.
Right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thanks for that opportunity. So tonight's recommendation from the Arts Commission is to support 24 arts and culture projects and two arts partnerships for a total of $125,000. And I would note that the recommendations are made by the Arts Commission evaluating all of the applications using a rubric with those three criteria we discussed, and then they scored them and kind of created a break-off of funding. The two arts partnerships are to Village Theater and to the Issaquah History Museums. Both of these amounts do demonstrate a little bit of a reduced amount compared to 2024. And then here are grant recommendations for the arts projects. There are 24 of them, primarily at the $5,000 level. There are a handful at $2,500, and then a couple that are just odd numbers because people requested something different. And then also, a couple of ones at the end that I want to highlight, that we're really seeking just support for facility rental, and the facility rental they were seeking support for was something that the city maintains and owns. And so we figured, given the reduced amount of funding, that maybe another way that we could provide support this year would be to cover in-kind those rentals, and that freed up a little additional money, so we were able to give a few more grants. Another change this year was that applicants couldn't submit more than three projects, which sounds like a lot, but in the past, we've had applicants submit five and six. So that also reduced the sort of strain on the funding. I just wanted to point out, I think this didn't make it into your packet, so I'm sorry. I wanted to point out a couple of things about the impact of these grants, and that is that collectively, these programs and projects would result in about 150,000 participants. Those might be duplicated in some instances, but 150,000 participants in Issaquah over the course of the year. That there's a very wide range of activities supported through these grants. So we have visual and performing literary arts, cultural arts. The funded projects through the organizations and the project teams represent 300 creative workers. Lots of volunteers are leveraged through these projects, and then you can see collectively, it's a $17.5 million support that's provided to the local economy. So timing and next steps, just to give you an idea of how we got here. The application was released in October of '24. The deadline was December 5th. The Arts Commission took the month of December and early January to review the applications and then reviewed them at two public meetings in January that were attended by applicants. I'm here tonight to present these to you, and then we're hoping they can go to council in February, and then we'll begin our contracting phase. So just back to the direction needed, hoping you can provide direction on the award and allocation for this year's arts grants as recommended by the Arts Commission. And I am always more than happy to take questions you might have.
Yeah, Amy, can you, when you talk about the requested amount versus the funding recommendation, can you talk a little bit about, I don't need to know when there's like a 10% difference, but there's three or four of these where the request is substantially more than what we decided on. So can you, can you talk a little bit about that process?
Sure. I don't have the list in front of me, but.
I can, I can.
Which I should.
It starts with Issaquah History Museum.
Okay.
With their $12,000 request and the $6,500 recommendation.
Great. And so that is them requesting the maximum amount that they're eligible for. And the, in many instances, the scoring affected the amount that was recommended. So the application scored well, but it didn't score sort of high enough to get recommended for the full amount. And then also, just sort of, those two arts organizations, the arts partnership category, did take the sort of hit of having less funding this year. The projects are sort of a little more straightforward in that they're either 5,000 or 2,500. Sort of you get the money to do the project or not do the project. They're a little bit more binary. So the arts partnerships, I think, are the, is the category that kind of suffered from our production in grant funds. But I believe the history museums received like $8,000 last year, so that is, you know, a reduction, but not a dramatic one. The Arts Commission also sort of recognizes that the history museums does receive a lot of support from the city in terms of its facilities. So they felt like, well, you are getting a lot of support from the city in other ways. So that's kind of the myriad of reasons why their funding is less than they requested.
Okay. And then Issaquah Free Little Art Galleries requested 5,000, and we recommended 2,500?
Yes, so this was the case of one where they said, we could do this for 2,500 or this for 5,000. They are offering to put up two free little art galleries for 2,500, or they could do four for 5,000. We did do another project years ago that was a free little art gallery, and just knowing the sort of timeline for that and the issues of finding a location, it's probably much more realistic to do two than four anyway, so that's why that one was supported in that way.
Okay. Global Grub and, oh, no. No, I guess, I guess that was it. Oh, Master Chorus East Side, All American Independence Celebration requested 2,500, and we rented 500?
And so 2,000 of their $2,500 request was to rent Pickering Barn, so we're going to, in kind, let them rent Pickering Barn, and then give them the $500, I believe, is for like sheet music and some marketing.
All right. Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. I guess there were a number that were requested and did not get anything.
That's correct.
But I see that some of those requested multiple programs, so like Fish requested on multiple programs and got one of their programs.
Correct. And of the ones that did not get funded, the biggest factor was the score of the application. There was a little bit factoring in how many applications they had and they were receiving funding, but primarily it was a scoring.
All right. Thank you. Do you have any other questions before we go to public comment? Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. On page five of your presentation, you've got a picture of the chalk event. There's a young boy drying a salmon. Which program is that for this cycle, and did we fund it again?
And so that is actually a 2024-funded program at the Hatchery. They actually added a lot of art elements to their public programming, and I believe that one was when they released the baby salmon. So they had a chalk artist provide the engagement opportunity.
Okay, and is, and that's different from the chalk art event that we do.
Correct.
Concerts on the Green. Maybe our Parks Director can tell me where that funding comes from, and I'm sure that's going to continue again this year. I just want to make sure that we have that as a great community event.
Amy can certainly echo that, but yeah, Jeff Watling, Parks Community Services Director, absolutely, that is funded through other operational budgets, so that is an event we look forward to doing again. In fact, I'll tee up Amy. Amy and the Arts Commission are looking at some creative ways of making that a little bit, a little bit bigger, a little bit different in the coming year.
Yeah, I just see some wonderful creative art that gets put on the sidewalk there, and, believe it or not, some of the high school students from the garage actually participate and do that, and it's interesting to see how their creativity comes out as well during that event. So thank you so much for all the hard work you're doing with the arts grants, and I don't have any additional questions.
I think we're ready to take public comment, so I will ask again if there's anyone either virtually or in the room who'd like to comment on this before we. Fund? Not seeing any. Burke, anything, anyone remote?
No virtual attendees, Chair.
All right. So pretty straightforward.
Having served on the Arts Commission, I think, for 12 years and gone through this process, I think that Arts Commission and the Human Services Commission are the two commissions that really put in hours and hours and hours into reviewing, scoring, like you said, and then deciding the funding amounts for all these applications. So it really is a huge job. So please convey our appreciation again for the hard work that the Arts Commission, all of the Arts Commissioners do, because every Arts Commissioner takes a certain amount that they work on, and it is a true collaborative effort. I think the awards are fantastic, but, and I trust the Commission to do a good job because I know the process is so thorough, and sometimes decisions are very hard because of the funding amount, so it's difficult. And I think that's, I think that's all I have to say is, I think that it looks great. I know some of these organizations do great things. I know. I had one more thing to say. We're going to have another film festival. I saw it on there.
It's true.
Yeah, that, that. Yeah, that, that has turned out to be an amazing project. There's lots of really good stuff in there, but that one kind of leapt out at me and I thought, oh, great, that film festival is going to continue. So that's wonderful news. So those are my only comments. I think it's great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Joe?
I'm currently the Chair of the LTAC Committee and I couldn't help but notice that a number of these projects are art related, but they do bring in visitors from outside of Issaquah and perhaps overnight stays. And so the, the, the two funding sources do cross over and support each other. Issaquah Highlands Global Grub and Groove was one that we had supported in the past. And I appreciate the, the number that you put up there for the amount of economic support or economic development dollars that come into the city because of, of the work that we do here. I, I think of these grants as kind of priming the pump, so to speak, in terms of encouraging artists to take a risk and do projects or organizations to take a risk and, and hold a festival or an event in the city. And I see that DIA, for instance, has a number of events that have been going on for a number of years and have grown in popularity and, and the number of people that come out for those events. So I appreciate the hard work that gets done by the Arts Commission to review these. And I think that the selections are, are pretty good this year and I would fully support the presentation and the recipients in your presentation. Thank you.
So I always love when we do this, when we review art grant proposals. It just reminds me, first of all, of the hard work that you and the, and the Arts Board does, but also just how many great arts organizations we have operating in the city and the thoughtfulness put in to their requests. So yeah, I'm very supportive and just want to thank you and the, or Commission for your hard work.
I'll definitely pass that along to...
City Administrators, anything else you need on this one?
Just a recommendation on placement before the full council. The Administration would recommend consent.
Yep. Head nods. Thank you. Thanks, Amy.
Thanks so much.
All right. Last and certainly, we have COM 0078 Urban Forest Management Plan Draft with Dan Hints, our urban forester.
...to state on. Yeah, thanks again for having me here tonight, Councilmembers. Really excited to come present a hopefully near-complete final draft of the Urban Forest Management Plan. I guess this is a little reminder, we'll, we'll go over a little bit of a recap, but this was brought to committee in July of 2024. And I guess before I get into it too, I do want to introduce Chris Pfeifer is online from Planet Geo. They are a urban forestry consultant that has been working with us to write and publish this plan. So Chris will be available for questions if, if they come up throughout the presentation or at the end as well. So just, just a reminder, this is the city's first urban forest management plan. It is a foundational piece of any urban forestry program in city government. So this was a really exciting opportunity to, you know, build out our first urban forestry program. And this plan looks at a, about a 10-year roadmap or guide to developing that program. Really at the heart of this is hopefully most people in this room and certainly in our community recognize the myriad benefits that trees and forests provide our community, whether that's environmental, ecological, aesthetic, economic, social, health. There, there are just so many reasons that we're continuing to learn, you know, the, the benefits trees provide. But kind of the opposite of that is that, you know, there are challenges, of course, that come with managing trees in a built environment. So this plan is really, you know, looking at how do we balance those benefits with some of those challenges? And how do we continue to maximize, enhance and maintain those, those benefits that our trees and urban forests provide? So I'll be giving just a quick recap of the work that was done prior to the July meeting touchpoint with you all. Really the big section that was included since then was implementation and monitoring. We'll do a quick little detour, but certainly related on a little recap of kind of work since the Bomb Cyclone event. And then we'll be looking for direction on adoption of the plan and discussing next steps for implementation. So this slide kind of recaps that, that we're looking, providing a final update and seeking a recommendation from the Safe Services Safety and Park Committee for adoption of the Urban Forest Management Plan to full council. So these next couple of slides are kind of, hopefully be kind of a quick recap, but this is the timeline for the process. We got under contract with Planet Geo and Chris's team back in October of 2023. Really looked at an update of our canopy assessment that was originally done in 2019, the city's first citywide tree canopy assessment. So this is the second edition of that that is included in the forest management plan. Really started gathering data, putting together an engagement plan and, you know, doing a lot of background research. Towards the end of 2023 and the, the first quarter of 2024, really focused on both staff input. So we had 50-plus staff members provide responses to a survey and a good portion of those members have follow-up meetings with, with Chris's team and myself. And then really focusing on the public engagement through public survey, public events, and we'll touch on this briefly on the next side, touchpoints with our environmental and park boards. After really a lot of that information gathering last spring, April through June is when we really started developing, well, I should, I should maybe say first, we did the urban forest audit and benchmarks, which kind of compare our community to communities of similar size. There's a slide coming up on that a little bit later in the implementation and monitoring section. But that information really started to shape the draft strategies, the vision, guiding principles, and then the associated goals and priority actions with those. So that is, you know, about where we met with you back in July. That produced the first draft. We took that to this committee, to the park board, to the environmental board to make sure we felt really good about those guiding principles, the associated strategies and, as I mentioned, goals and priority actions. Once we felt pretty good about that, that's when we published the third section of the plan, which is implementation and monitoring. We wanted to make sure we felt good consensus around, like I said, those, those goals, strategies, priority actions before we actually talk about what it looks like implementing those. So that was really, you know, kind of end of last summer that we produced that first draft, another round of public comment and board engagements, and then, you know, a second draft and then now brought the final draft was intended to go to this committee in November. And I think everyone remembers that night changed our plans a little bit. So we're here a couple, a couple of months later after the Bomb Cyclone event. So that, that's why this last, last part on the timeline is a little extended in terms of, you know, council adoption and delivery. So I do want to just kind of review some of the feedback that we received from you in July, from the three of you. Really urged staff to consider low-cost economical ways to enhance the city's urban forest. These were addressed in the memo, but I'll do a quick recap for these bullet points here too. We are going to continue to grow Green Issaquah, lean on our volunteers, lean on our great community partners. We have a few representatives from Issaquah Alps Trails Club here tonight, Mountains of Sound Greenway, Trout Unlimited. We've actually been really successful working with those groups to, for them to receive grant funding and work on projects in Issaquah. So that's been a really great strategy with actually all three of those organizations over the past year. Working with DNR, King Conservation District on looking for grant funding opportunities for our tree inventory, which I would say is really the other foundational piece of an urban forestry program that we hope to launch here this year. And some other forest assessment work for some of our larger native growth areas like Tradition Plateau. So we're going to continue to, to lean on those resources and, and, you know, be as creative as we can to continue to build this program. The next two bullets touch on the focus around riparian areas, which was great to hear. There was generally positive feedback around that. So this plan was the first time we did a riparian canopy assessment, looked at some canopy changes from that 2019 study to our 2024 canopy update, you know, for our main five or so salmon-bearing streams throughout, throughout Issaquah. I just wanted to call out that that's something that really complements work that community planning is doing. They're, I think, just published their Riparian Assessment and Recommendation Report. So our work here really provides kind of the canopy cover, the areas that's lacking, the areas that are priorities, where there could possibly be priority acquisitions. I would say this one has really come to light in the last couple of months as we've been working around trees and creeks, hazard trees and riparian areas adjacent to homes. And I would say some of the benefits, you know, where we can, if possible, you know, bring some of those areas into, into public land ownership. So the, the second to last bullet point was on tree canopy as an equity issue. The report does use a tool called the Tree Equity Score, which is a tool put together by American Forest. So we're really looking at that in terms of how we prioritize a tree giveaway program that we're looking at launching, Parks and Sustainability working on that. We are working with a community partner called 300 Trees and they're looking at doing our first giveaway for private residents in Issaquah in November of this year. So really looking at certain areas of the city that, you know, maybe don't have as much canopy, maybe have more issues with air quality, stormwater issues. So that's the Tree Equity Tool. And also there's the Washington Health Disparities Map. And some of those maps for priority planting, based on some of the factors in the Washington Health Disparities, like stormwater, like air quality, like existing low canopy are actually synthesized in the appendix. And, you know, you can look at each of those indicators for census blocks in Issaquah in terms of where we want to prioritize tree planting as it relates to some of those factors. Lastly, there were some concerns raised about illegal tree removals. That is a goal in our Guiding Principle C, which is looking at, you know, our tree preservation code and policies. It kind of complements our Guiding Principle E, which is focused on community education and engagement. I would say this is certainly an area for growth that I am wanting to work on with our community planning department, especially as we are potentially looking at some tree preservation code amendments this year. How do we convey that information to the public? I would say, you know, legal tree removals is a concern, but we see more and more issues with aggressive, if not excessive pruning, as we have defined in our code. And sometimes it's just, it's just ignorance. It's not necessarily people trying to do something, I would say especially on the pruning side, that is, you know, harmful to the trees, but it's really kind of educating about the, the needs for proper care and maintenance. So this is something that we had conversations with Talis HOA, with Issaquah Highlands Community Association. There was a lot of interest of how we could collaborate on messaging, both through possibly community meetings and certainly online and some physical resources around proper tree care and also just how to connect with the right people in the city to get that information. So board touchpoints. This is just a list of park board and environmental board meetings. It kind of followed along with that timeline a couple of slides back. Really the two major touchpoints since we met last July was in August with the Environmental Board when the draft of the plan was presented. Their memo summarizing some of their comments was attached to this agenda. They are very interested in staying involved with implementation of the plan. So we are definitely looking at potentially joint park board and environmental board meetings moving forward, hopefully once or twice a year to update on progress and, and get feedback. But then ultimately it went to the park board in September to recommend the adoption process move forward to council. So that was the last touchpoint in late September with the park board. So I'll go through these maybe a little bit more quickly since this stuff was touched on in July, but essentially the plan has three major sections. The first section is current conditions. This is essentially what do we have? And it's broken into about eight subsections. We're looking at tree types. I would say this is something that's lacking a little bit because we don't have a public tree inventory. A lot of the information used in there, we pulled from the Green Issaquah 20-year implementation plan that really focuses more on our open spaces and, and not as much on street trees, trees and maintained park areas, but still gives us some pretty good indications on composition of our, of our urban forest. Already touched on the urban tree canopy, the riparian canopy analysis. We have recommendations in the plan to update that riparian canopy analysis ideally every three years and a citywide kind of comprehensive tree canopy analysis every 10 years. So that would be looking at 2027 since we, a little confusing. I said 2019 for the first tree assessment we did, but that was with 2017 data. So we want to make sure we're doing that at a minimum every decade to track some of our canopy goals, both in subareas and by land use. Urban forest composition, as I also mentioned, that kind of relates to what we have with the Green Issaquah Implementation Plan. That looked at the value of some of our existing forests, so stand diversity, age of forest, and then also the threats, which is really primarily looking at invasive species. So the areas that scored really high in that matrix are areas we want to focus on preservation and monitoring. The areas that scored really low don't have much value, existing canopy, and honestly are probably a bigger lift than maybe it's worth taking, taking on. It's some of those areas in the middle where there's some canopy that's worth protecting and a lot of potential to do the habitat and forest restoration. And that's really how we've been using that tool to prioritize some of the sites we're working in as part of Green Issaquah. Management programs is really looking at about the cross-department parks operations, where, where I am at, public works, how that relates to our community planning and our tree code. So really, really trying to tighten up cross-department collaboration and our programs and protocols as it relates to tree management. Alignment with existing plans really looked at how the Urban Forest Management Plan complements, hopefully a few things might be contrasting too, but really looked at park system plan, Issaquah Climate Action Plan, comp plan, and really kind of where the alignment is with what we're doing here in urban forestry. Already touched on staff and community engagement, but that is a big part of the current conditions and some of the feedback we got from the community and our city staff. Urban forest vulnerabilities is really looking at climate change. How do we select the right trees for obviously the right location, but a moving target with a changing climate? That relates to one of our priority actions we have in the plan and hope to take on in the next year or two is updating our preferred tree list. There's definitely a lot of potential work to do there. It's looking at pests. We are hoping to put together an Emerald Ash Bore Preparedness Plan. That's something that is just a matter of time before it starts impacting ash trees in our community. It's been devastating to the Midwest and a lot of the East Coast, and it has just been discovered in Oregon and British Columbia. Likely in Washington, but has not been actually identified yet. So those are just examples of some of the vulnerabilities.
Sorry, pause this for a second. Deputy Council President has a question.
So on the forest vulnerabilities, I know in Seattle that they've got a issue around aging trees and trees are, trees that were planted 40, 50, 60 years ago are now, you know, nearing the end of their life and they're figuring out how to replace all of those. And do we have that same problem here or is our community just that much younger that it's not yet an issue?
I think as it relates to street trees, it's maybe not as much of an issue. A lot of our especially newer developments like Issaquah Highlands, Talis are, you know, 20, 30 years old. I would say there are some issues with trees that are maybe outgrowing their space, you know, in those places and some of the conflicts we have with sidewalks and, and things like that. I would say some of our open spaces, that's where there's really a need to do a little bit more microanalysis of some of the, you know, kind of forest age structure where we do have older declining, specifically deciduous forests that we want to try to transition into more coniferous forest and, you know, have that next kind of cohort of trees coming up there. So I'd say in those places, we certainly do. Sound like a little bit of a broken record, but this is just another reason why a tree inventory is so important too. It's both knowing what types of trees, age and size and, and health is ultimately what starts to decline as those trees get older. So we, we don't really have that data yet, but that's definitely probably the top priority coming out of this plan that we hope to take on over the next year. Yep. So urban forest vulnerabilities and lastly, urban forest evaluation. And I'll come back to this a little bit more. This is what I touched on very briefly, this benchmarking exercise and the urban forest audit, which is a United States Forest Service protocol that we use to sort of see where our program's at and, and where the areas are we need to continue to grow and build. So section two is really looking at those visions, vision I should say, not plural, and recommendations. So you all should have seen this last time, but we have our vision statement that was, you know, derived from the public survey, workshopped with the... derived from the public survey, workshopped with the Park Board and Environmental Board. And this is really kind of the overarching vision for our forest here in Izuaqua. Then underneath that, we have five guiding principles. And these are really meant, if program scale changes, staffing changes, these are kind of the guiding lights that we come back to if we need to amend the plan, if we need to kind of reassess some of the goals in the plan. These are really the guiding areas. And we're looking at an equitable and resilient canopy cover. So that's really the trees and the urban forest itself. We're looking at how we maintain and manage those trees and our more contiguous forested areas, our open spaces. It's definitely how we administer that through our tree preservation code and tree protection, looking at funding and level of services. And last but certainly not least is that community education, engagement, and stewardship piece. So each of those guiding principles kind of have their own vision statement, which I won't read out loud, but that's what's under each of them. So lastly, this is really what is the new sort of piece that has been added to the draft or now near final draft since we met back in July. It's the implementation and monitoring section, Section Three. So within this section, there are strategy tables. So it kind of looks at prioritization, it looks at co-benefits, cost. Most of the costs are qualitative, kind of a one to four dollar sign system, but there are some high priority items that we are looking at actual estimated dollar costs, level of effort, who the key players are, kind of initial steps, short-term targets and timeframes. City implementers, as I mentioned, it's really important. This touches on almost every department in the city, lots of teams within those departments. So we have been meeting monthly as a city tree team, really mainly folks from city, community planning, sustainability, parks, and public works, really trying to kind of build that coordination there, working with our city boards, city partners, and interested parties as well. So really looking at who is taking lead and who is often sharing implementation of some of these items. The worksheet is a way to really track this. So it's sortable, you can filter it, you can use the priority actions. So that's really a tool to kind of track some of the implementation efforts. As I mentioned briefly, we do have cost estimates for some priority actions. For example, an update to our riparian canopy analysis, I believe, is about a $10,000 item, about $25,000 for that more comprehensive citywide canopy assessment. I will note that my understanding is those are getting cheaper as the technology is getting better, but that's kind of the current estimate. And then supporting resources. So there's a lot of appendices, as you'll see, tree data summary reports. That's where some of those maps around tree equity, health disparities, climate vulnerabilities, preferred tree lists, that's where a lot of those items and analysis live. We did include this just as a kind of cost comparison and example of the benchmarking activity. I would say some of these bar graphs are out of proportion a little bit, but you can see the, essentially per capita, this is compared to 19 best matches here in Western Washington. This is all data that we submit annually as part of our Tree City USA application. So we can then see what other communities have submitted as well. So we are on par, if not a little bit above, in the per capita spending. We do a really good job on tree planting and initial care relatively, I would say, tree maintenance, pruning cycles, care for trees that are kind of more at the end or near extending the lifetimes of some of these is an area where we definitely have room for growth. Tree removals, I think that's interesting one to look at. Obviously, there's necessary responses like we've had over the last two months. And then there's kind of more proactive risk management around tree removals where I think there's some areas for growth there, especially with the amount of open space we have adjacent to private developments and homes. And then kind of some other categories around management and other items there, too. So you can see, we stack up pretty well compared to the best matches, the 19 communities that were compared as part of this benchmarking exercise. And I believe the last slide for this section is kind of...
I'm sorry, Councilmember Joe has a question.
Yes. Dan, thanks for the presentation and I really appreciate it. In the executive summary for the plan, you stated that, if you can go back one slide, you stated that there's a $2.2 million environmental benefit by having the tree cover that we have. So if I'm looking at just solely at the numbers and I see that we're spending $9.11 per capita here in the city per year, and I'm a little cynical, what can I say to citizens in terms of what are we getting back for that investment?
That's tough because it's not a revenue, of course, but it is a value. So just for a little context, that is a tool called iTree that does a lot of estimates on benefits trees provide. I would say probably the largest component of that is stormwater management. So trees are a huge resource for stormwater interception, essentially slowing down that hydro period or how fast the water moves through the system, especially in areas where we have high impervious surface. There are certainly benefits around air quality, heating and cooling. I should have touched on that in terms of urban forest vulnerabilities, but heat island is a big one and how do we prioritize trees in areas that we know are going to be more difficult as it relates to summer temperatures and asphalt and pavement. So yeah, so once again, coming back, we would probably have a more accurate number once we do our tree inventory, but that is a really kind of broad brushstrokes of, I think, I would say probably two-thirds or more of that estimate. I think you could connect to stormwater and then some of the other ones, heating and cooling benefits, energy use as well. I would say just to kind of call out one of the really, really neat resources that I've come across in my almost two years working for the city now, Cityus Noqualmie did a really great natural infrastructure assessment. It's really been looked at as a great document to justify investment into stormwater as it relates to the urban forest. And I might have mentioned this in the last meeting, but actually our annual permit through ecology for the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, I think I have that right, NPDES, that our Public Works team manages, that's usually on a five-year interval. And in the next iteration of that, they're going to be asking for more data on riparian canopy work, riparian canopy assessment, and just citywide tree canopy. So you're seeing it on the regulatory side, too, where this is being brought in as like, hey, we need to make sure we are factoring in the natural or green infrastructure as well as the kind of traditional ways we manage.
That was a great answer. And you almost got them all. They're on page 46. Carbon storage, wildlife habitat, stress reduction, and one that kind of was highlighted for me was soil stabilization. After the fires in LA, we're seeing the rains and just all the soil getting washed into the ocean. I don't think we really appreciate all the soil that the trees hold in place, especially on Squawk Mountain. Where I live, it's pretty rocky soil and the trees are essential to have that stabilization. So thank you very much for that answer.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. And yes, carbon sequestration is a huge part of that that I should have called out as well. Coming back to this last slide on Section Three, evaluate, evaluate, monitor, and report, and then revise as needed is the really high-level framework to the monitoring section. So the two tools that I've touched on briefly already is a follow-up to that urban or the USFS, the United States Forest Service Urban Forest Audit. So that's something we'll look at doing ideally every two years and reporting out on progress made there, and then that benchmarking exercise as well. So that will really kind of guide progress towards this plan. That worksheet as well, where we track implementation items is another way that we'll document that. So we'll kind of look at those benchmark values that have been established over the last two years as part of the monitoring process, see where we're growing, see where there's still room for growth, and see how we're doing on those indicators as part of the audit. As I mentioned, I would like to, at a minimum, bring this annually to the Park and Environmental Boards, but would love to come to council or at the very least committee meetings as well to provide annual updates. Publish reports, I'll admit, I have not been as good on that. Our Green Izuaqua volunteer coordinator, Taylor, has been great at publishing annual reports. I think that got shared with council about a month ago. Our park ranger's been doing a really great job publishing annual reports. And I think the three of us need to continue to work together and how we kind of wrap that all under the urban forestry program here as it relates to the work with trees and implementation of this plan as well. So looking at some annual reporting on progress and implementation that can be shared out through city networks. And then revising. So I would say in general, these plans are often updated every 10 years. It says five to 10 years here. I think there's certainly value in midpoint check-ins in terms of kind of progress and possibly making some adjustments as needed. But that's really looking at these steps here to revise as necessary, the strategies, goals, and priorities in the plan. So this is where, just going to shift gear for just a slide and a couple of slides with pictures, just to give a kind of brief update on cyclone response, because I believe there's probably a lot of interest there in terms of how that's been going over the last two-plus months. So it doesn't tie directly to the urban forest management plan, but there's elements in there, of course, that relate to how we react and respond to big events that have pretty significant impacts on our urban forest. And you've probably seen a lot of this, but our team with Parks Operations, Public Works, of course, really prioritize clearing roads, trails, and structures from downed trees. So that was really the first few weeks. A lot of that debris was cast aside, so that really led to debris hauling dispersal. That is still ongoing, but we are getting close there where all of a sudden there's not branches and large rounds of tree trunks all over the meadows at Confluence Park. So our teams have been so impressive. I've been so proud to work with these folks and see how much they've gotten done over the last two months and the effort and energy and positive attitude they've put in. I would say where my role has come in a lot more is risk assessments for damaged trees and flood risk of trees and creeks. This is ongoing. The calls have tapered off a little bit maybe in the last couple of weeks, but there is quite a bit coming in. People that might have had one tree come down, now they're very concerned about the others. So really trying to kind of triage where, yes, that tree needs to come out because there is significant damage to it and it poses a high hazard, where we can try to retain trees as best we can, and working with the state neighbors on flood risk and the priority or the benefits of leaving trees and creeks as it relates to salmon habitat, but the added flood risk that can come with that. So I'll have a few photos in the next couple of slides that give examples of those. So contractor coordination's been huge. We have several contractors both helping with some of the assessments and then the removal work. We had both of them in Izuaqua today doing some work, but that is hopefully tapering off here pretty soon, too, as we're getting through the priority hazard tree removals. I think one of the very interesting points and something that I am excited to call out here is then how do we get into replanting? How do we get into recovery? Right now, it's still very much the cleanup, the risk assessment, and the associated work with that. But we're really excited. We have pinned down April 5th as our annual Arbor Day event. So we'll be having volunteers out at Confluence Park, replacing some of the large trees we've lost there, continuing to work in the critical area, riparian buffer. We're hoping to have a large turnout for that as really kind of an opportunity for the community to get involved and start to do some things tangible to actually build back some of these areas that we had a lot of tree loss from the windstorm. I would say realistically, it's going to take us years to get through the amount of replacement that we have. And that's partly because we still have a lot of stumps to grind. We still have a lot of things to prep to even just get the trees back in the ground. We have a conservative estimate of about 300 trees lost in right-of-ways maintained areas, sorry, I said right-of-ways and maintained areas of parks. That number is a lot higher when you factor in open spaces. I would say that is a different approach, though, and that's my last bullet there, selective approach to replanting in open spaces. All the benefits we've talked about for stormwater, for heat island effect, that really relates more to our street trees, trees in the built environment. Open spaces, some of these natural disturbances can actually be really good for long-term forest development. We have a lot of forests that are monocultures of Douglas fir that are all the same age from maybe the last clearcutting on Tiger Mountain in the 1980s, early 1990s. And some of those areas where you lose trees actually open up gaps and more complexity and structural diversity in our forests. So that is something I'm really excited. One of the items we have as part of implementation is a specific tree, or as I say, forest management plan for Tradition Plateau. We have over 1,500 acres of forested open space in the city. Almost a third of that is on Tradition Plateau within the Natural Resource Conservation Area. And I should say the slopes going down from the plateau, too. So that'll be a focus. So we actually have some grant funding to work with through King Conservation District, working with Northwest Natural Resource Group that does amazing work around forest health and forest planting. They are the group that works with Seattle Public Utilities on the Cedar River Watershed. They do the Forest Stewardship Council certification for King County's forest, all things that we're looking at, potential options to certify parts of our forest. But this is a really first step where we'll look at, hey, what were the impacts of this windstorm? Where do we just kind of let the forest do its thing? Where do we actually need to do more replanting restoration? And where could there actually be beneficial areas where we're actually thinning? You'll hear the term ecological thinning, some of these really, really dense stands of uniform species and height. So that's something I'm really excited about and it would just kind of acknowledge that we are still kind of assessing the impacts in some of our open spaces as we've really been focused on the built environment and getting things operating and making things safe for our residents and neighbors. But that's a big area we're going to continue to assess, where replanting is warranted, where other areas, this is actually beneficial as much as it looks pretty devastating when you go out there. But that is a natural part of forest succession is some of these big disturbances, whether that's snow, ice storms, wind events. I hate to say wildfires, that's probably one I shouldn't bring up.
Yeah, don't use that word. Russell does have...
Sorry, Wally.
Councilmember Joe does have a question for you.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions on this slide. Let's talk about the editorial that was submitted by our mayor January 8th, talking about the challenges with removing trees on some of the property. Was that city property or was that DNR property in the state? If it was our property, have we worked out some agreement so that downed trees can be removed by volunteers?
Yeah, so one of the things that Jeff and I had to call on days after the bomb cyclone is how do we mobilize volunteers to get out and support neighbors on private property? And we really wanted to use Green Izuaqua as a tool to essentially play matchmaker, kind of connect. So I'll come back to maybe trails here in a second, but this is more folks that have just large trees, don't have the resources, don't have the tools, to literally clean up their driveway, stuff around their houses, and in the worst circumstances, things that go on their structures, too, on their buildings. So that was really a challenge as we kind of worked through the legal side of that, that even if the city isn't necessarily signing up the volunteers, that if we're publicizing it, if we're doing it through an established program like Green Izuaqua, that's where there was some of the challenges, like, pretty much that got shot down based on some liability concerns there. So I'd say that would be one area that kind of came up where there was momentum to see how we can bring people out and really just support neighbors and connect people that might have a truck, have saws, be able to go out and do that. But when you're starting to use tools like chainsaws that do have a lot of required training and skills with it, that just, I guess, became kind of a non-starter there. I would say in the open spaces, it's a mix. We ended up actually doing some great collaboration with DNR and some of their volunteers that have a lot of sawyer training really established. And then there were some people, I think, that just wanted to kind of go out and do that on their own. And I personally have some concerns. It's one thing if you're using hand tools, handsaw, stuff like that, but as soon as you start firing up a chainsaw, I do believe there's a little bit elevated need of experience and credibility and whether that's associated with an organization like DNR, WTA, Washington Trails Association, I think that's really important. So to answer your question, actually, it's been a combo of working with DNR and some of their volunteers, some of our staff. We actually have Washington Conservation Corps crew out right now that's been helping with some cleanup on trails, so there are AmeriCorps volunteers. So yeah, I would say we are actually at the point now where Tradition Plateau is very passable. There are still a few sketchy trees that probably require contract to work at some point, but we've made a lot of progress in that in the last two or three weeks, getting our trail systems up.
Great, I really appreciate that answer. I know that we have such a tradition of volunteerism in the city and I know that there are many people that would like to help out and they just need to find the right avenue to do that. My next question concerns, is concerning the selective approach to replanting in open spaces. When I was driving around town, I would see trees that had fallen that had very shallow root bases. And as you're thinking about replanting, are there, is there thought to certain trees that we would select for our open spaces and right-of-ways that have deeper root systems that could perhaps handle windstorms and other catastrophic events like that?
That's a really interesting question. I think it does tie back to one of your comments earlier about some of the poor soils we have, especially in the foothills, which is a lot of glacial till where you may not have more than six, eight, 12 inches of actual organic material stuff can root in. So that's where it starts to get more broad rooting system versus deeper rooting systems. Yeah, that has not been too seriously considered. And I do think some of the existing soil profile and conditions make that a little bit challenging, especially we're talking about more of our foothills and slopes. Yeah, I think that's something worth considering, but yeah. Yeah, I think that's something worth considering, but yeah, not thought about that too much.
Okay, I again would agree with you that our Parks and Rec and our Public Works has done a great job clearing the trees, and it's going to be a long-term process. I look forward to helping out in any way that we can, and I'm glad we have the right people on the team to handle that. Thank you.
Thank you. I would say yes, I mean, we certainly want to publicize these, both Arbor Day but subsequent planting events as, you know, storm recovery work. So I mean, I think that's an area that we'll really hope to try to kind of galvanize the community around tangible ways with, you know, our established Green Isiqua program. Both restore habitat, and then we're also talking about a lot of, you know, individual park trees that, you know, may not necessarily be native species and also be- So I guess just moving forward, these are just a few examples. This is on the east fork of Isiqua Creek, just off of Dogwood. This was one of the worst log jams I saw where there was about four, three to four foot diameter cottonwoods that all just crisscrossed, was already starting to rack up other debris. This is all stuff we've been working with Washington State Department of Efficient Wildlife and their regional biologists to, you know, make sure that we are, you know, doing the right steps for their hydraulic permits, make sure that we're doing the right steps for any mitigation that might be required with that. And this is a tricky one, a lot of the sites were able to cut, reposition the trees, so maintain some of that habitat in the stream while allowing for better flow and conveyance downstream, reducing some of those flood risks. This is a tricky one where a lot of these, we had to pull out, store on a city parcel on Crescent there, and then our Public Works team will be working on a plan to actually put those logs back in the creek. So I think hopefully most folks are familiar, these are state codes around fish habitat that require those logs to stay in or be replaced, repositioned elsewhere. And depending how aggressive that repositioning replacement is, there might be additional mitigation, tree planting, additional logs being put in. So this is really the trees, I would say we've, myself, Matt Ellis, Alan Quinn, folks with our Public Works engineering team, have really been taking lead on this. I've been focusing on the ones that have more of a parks or open space nexus. There's been at least a dozen sites, we've had contractors out to remove, I shouldn't say remove, to cut and relocate or reposition trees in our creek to reduce that flood risk. And then these are just two of many examples of trees that did not fully come down during the storm, but posed pretty imminent hazards, you know, edge of open space. The cedar tree on the left is right on the edge of Hillside Cemetery, right on the backyard of a resident there, where one of the stems just totally split out. Now you still have a foot diameter, probably 60-foot tall stem that's pretty weakly attached to the rest of that trunk there and will continue to rot. That is not the type of wound that a tree will unfortunately be able to heal over. And then the one on the right is a big leaf maple behind an apartment complex on Newport Way that also had a large stem failure, and now a huge cavity and wound in the tree too. So these were the examples of more priority removals. And now I'd say we're kind of the next tier of trying to figure out maybe some of these less concerning trees and whether they can be safely retained. That's work that I'm doing more of, but then we work with a third-party consultant called Tree Solutions to provide risk assessments for us as well. So they've been out quite a bit, and will be out here quite a bit over the next few weeks as well. So just wanted to give some kind of photos, images of, you know, kind of what we're looking at. I would say there's been dozens, three, four dozen trees like this that I've come across or Public Works as well. So a lot of these partial failures and concerns about the rest of these trees coming down near buildings and roads. If there's any last questions on the bomb Cyclone, if not, I'm going to kind of wrap it back up on the Forest Management Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a question on our tree inventory work. We received an email from the Isiqua Alps Club concerning alders, red alders, and the makeup of our forested hills.
Yes.
And red alder taking a lot of the territory and elbowing out some of the pine trees that we'd like to see in the forest. How are we thinking about addressing that through this plan or through other options in the near future?
So yeah, within this plan, as I kind of touched on, you know, the first large contiguous open space we are going to focus on is Tradition Plateau. There's certainly alder deciduous trees up there, there's aging maple trees that we are kind of losing that canopy and not seeing the natural regeneration of other trees there that we want to see. So those are examples of spots that we might look to actually replant. I think what Kelly sent was looking more at areas on Cougar Mountain. I would say that would be hopefully a next phase we move into for a more specific Forest Management Plan for the Talis native growth area there, where we see a lot more deciduous trees. And yes, there are strong arguments to be made, as I mentioned, that's ecological thinning, gap clearing, and then, you know, really trying to restore with cedar where appropriate, Douglas fir, and some of our native conifer trees. So that is something that is, you know, a recommendation for a little bit more of these kind of micro Forest Management Plans, especially for our larger open spaces. Kind of my decision to focus on Tradition Plateau first, partly just based on the amount of acres there. And I would say maybe less on the alders, but there's still a lot of kind of homogeneous Douglas fir forest in there too, where there could be arguments too for actually conifer removal to let some of those trees grow faster and stronger too. We do see issues with, and we saw a lot of trees fail like this near East Sunset Way Trailhead, where there are trees of the same age, same species, pretty densely planted or regrowth is pretty dense in there, and trees just don't develop good taper, essentially stronger bases and kind of narrowing to the crown when they're really kind of hemmed in with trees of the same size. So trees with poor taper are much more likely to fail in big wind events like that. So to that point, I guess to answer your question, yes, we are going to look at continuing to do, for instance, this Forest Management Plan for the Tradition Plateau is about $10,000. We're spending about $90,000 on this Urban Forest Management Plans. That gives you kind of an idea relatively what the scale and scope of these look like for, you know, some specific contiguous open space areas like Talis, like Tradition Plateau. Definitely some stuff, potential on Squawk Mountain too.
Great, thank you very much. That concludes my questions.
Deputy Council President, do you have any questions?
Well, we got this wonderful letter from the Isiqua Alps Trail Club, so I'll ask the other, the other part of the letter. Do we have any way of incentivizing our private property owners to maintain their canopy? And when we say private property owners, that could be the owners of large apartment complexes, or it could be single-family houses. So there's a wide range of private properties that we could be working with, but what do we have in mind in terms of incentivizing those private properties to maintain their tree canopy?
Yeah, so work to do there, and the one program that I have mentioned is a tree giveaway initiative. So that's something you'll see a lot of cities do, where we are funding, looking for grant funding, working with nonprofit partners. I mentioned a group called 300 Trees, they're really active in Bellevue area, and are now working with us in Isiqua. That's a connection I've made with our sustainability team. So that would be the opportunity to get new trees in the ground. I would say, coming back to one of the comments that I heard from our committee in terms of education around illegal tree removals, I was talking about tree care and maintenance is really important too. So I think that's where we really need to work together, myself, community planning, and then how we can tap into some of the larger HOAs to do education. And I would like to see that as community meetings, and I would like to see that as just better online resources and materials that we can connect the community with. I would say it gets a little trickier, and this is where I'm still learning, you know, how that relates to actual building codes and incentivizing that. We do have, in our Guiding Principal C, which looks at tree preservation, we do have a goal in there that does look at recognizing and incentivizing development projects that maintain or incorporate higher standards of tree canopy than are required by our current tree code. I still don't know exactly what that looks like in practice, I'll admit. So that's something that we have in there, something that I want to continue to work with community planning on, but what exactly that looks like, I think, is still to be determined.
All right, well, if we don't have any other questions, we are back for the third and final time to offer audience comment. Be at least one hand going up, at least two. So let's start with the folks that we have in the room.
Great, thank you, Chair Martz. I wanted to jump in here before Kelly.
Got the microphone. Jason Voise, resident, 700 Front Street South. Appreciate Dan for the great presentation. I learned more about trees in the last 30 minutes than maybe my entire time with Isiqua. So thank you. I'm currently in an HOA, and this is always, a long time ago, when I was part of that HOA, even as president, we are surrounded by trees. Arrington Place, right across from our savior, and we have always had to hire outside arborists. And a lot of, like, we have trails, we have everything, we're right by the Rainier Trail. And again, the entire property is surrounded by trees, underbrush, things like that. Is there, I guess the question, or I guess the, what I'd be hoping for, is there some type of city function where the city can come out and see that we're properly maintaining our grounds? There probably isn't anything like that, as far as I know, we're still calling arborists. After the bomb Cyclone, it took, and I know there was a lot of people and sawyers out there trying to take care of emergency stuff, but it took, we had a tree that was sitting at a, I don't know, a 30-degree angle, ready to take out the clubhouse. So there were some concerns, and I just don't know, I mean, if the city works really well with these HOAs and what type of leeway they do. My hope is that they would get better at it. So again, I do appreciate the conversation, it's always interesting to hear about the tree canopy. And then the other thing is, I have not gotten an opportunity to read your plan, but I didn't hear a lot, I heard a lot about maintenance and introducing, I'm wondering if there's also things, obviously, Los Angeles is top of mind for everybody, but I'm just thinking about fire breaks and cleaning out underbrush and things like that as part of the program. So I'm hopeful to hear more about this. And then just a thought is, when you made the comment about revisions every five to 10 years, seems like this one, at least until it gets off the ground for maybe 20 years, should be seen every five years, so it could be revised. So again, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker?
Hello. Oh, okay, you can hear me now. Hello, my name's Kelly Jing. I am the president of Isiqua Alps Trails Club, board member of the Mountain Sound Greenway, and a resident of Isiqua in Talis. So first of all, I wanted to say it's super exciting to see that the city of Isiqua is prioritizing tree canopy and really, you know, putting in the time and effort and funding to developing an urban forest management plan. You know, living in Talis, and actually I moved here in the pandemic because of, you know, just in that time, how important it was to be outside. And so that's part of why I moved to Talis and Isiqua. And so I know firsthand how important it is, you know, to have these natural areas for our quality of life here in Isiqua. As the president of IITC, I also really appreciated the focus in the plan on, you know, engaging with private and nonprofit partners. And, you know, it's been really great for us to have this partnership with Green Isiqua, both, you know, with our first project site at Park Point, now with the Miawaki Pocket Forest, which we've gotten some great grants for, and hopefully some more project sites in the future. So it's been really great to work with Dan and the whole team on that. And also, you know, it's a really great opportunity for people to get involved and feel like they're making a tangible difference at the local level, which is very important for all of us right now. And, yeah, and so thank you for reading my comments and asking my questions. Dan, I really appreciated what you said about, you know, the need to, you know, potentially do some thinning for forest health. And I think it's really important to acknowledge that even though we have this goal of tree canopy, sometimes, you know, in the short term, we might need to do things that will reduce tree canopy, but will have a better, you know, impact on long-term forest health. So actually, I was kind of hoping that in the text itself, it would say something like, there might be some actions that might reduce, you know, tree canopy in the short term, but are important to long-term forest health, which is one of our objectives. But, you know, hearing from you and from Jeff and everyone that that's something that's top of mind for you as well, that's great. And I think also, you know, working with the other land management agencies that adjoin, you know, the city-owned natural areas like Cougar Mountain, I know they're also engaging Northwest Natural Resource Group to do their Cougar Mountain forest planning stuff, and similarly with DNR. So I think, you know, we are so fortunate to have such amazing natural areas that are actually managed by like a patchwork of agencies. And so it's great to hear about the collaboration there, and I think, you know, moving forward potentially, that's something where the Isiqua Alps Trails Club could, you know, convene the different agencies and see like, hey, how can we manage the forest as a whole, you know, habitat and collective area rather than what is defined by political boundaries of ownership? And again, the last point that I wanted to make is what Deputy Council President De Michelle was talking about, which is, you know, Central Isiqua is where we have the lowest percentage of tree canopy currently, and that's also where a lot of the development is going to go in. And so, you know, what are some of the policies that we can do to encourage new developments, whether they be like middle housing or apartment buildings to include more tree canopy? There's, I mean, I had like random ideas, but I think that's definitely something that, you know, as we're looking into the Central Isiqua Plan, which was, I think, last updated in like 2012, I think, you know, moving forward, thinking about how we can maintain and increase tree canopy as we develop into the next phase of Isiqua. So, yeah, that's it for me. It's super exciting to see Isiqua, you know, putting effort and money and resources into, you know, maintaining what makes our city so special. And, yeah, so that's it for me.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else make comments? How about online?
Currently no online attendees, Chair Martz.
All right, there you go. Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. Dan, some of the wildland-urban interface question was brought up. Could you comment on the current status of WUI and what's going on at the state level with the maps?
Yeah, I am trying to track that as best with Jared Schneider. My understanding, there hasn't been an update, this has been about over a year now, and for context, there was a map that was published as part of the proposed state building code updates. Sorry if everyone's familiar with this, it was a pretty aggressive map that showed the vast majority of Isiqua as part of the wild urban land, urban interface, the WUI. That would have really significant impacts on any development, redevelopment, and what that means for a tree canopy. So that is certainly acknowledged in the Urban Forest Management Plan, but that, I think, ties into the needs to, you know, revise as some of that comes live. So I do not have an update on when we expect to see that. I will continue to connect with Jared, and he'll be my source for that once there's more information. But they are refining that, and I do think it will be a little less aggressive in terms of how much of our city limits is included in that WUI. There are certainly parts of our city that make a lot of sense, but to see that throughout the whole valley was sort of surprising, and that's not how that DNR map was ever intended to be used, so.
So basically, we are watching it, we're concerned about it, we're waiting for the state to give us guidance on the maps that we expect soon, whatever state works soon means, along the way. So we are making efforts to continue to watch it, but it's not final in terms of the guidance from the state. Is that kind of the summary?
That's my understanding, yes.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, so direction needed, really, are we ready for prime time? I think that's the consensus that I'm hearing. I assume we'd come back to full council, not on consent.
Yes, Mr. Chairmembers of the committee, we would like to take this opportunity to, first of all, put it on regular business, but also to talk a little bit more about the bomb Cyclone and the financial impacts, our abilities of working with the state and federal government to get funding, as well as to talk a little bit about fire issues, because certainly that has been in the news. We've not had that opportunity to talk with the council, the questions that Councilmember Joe raised. So we would ask, we will put this on regular business, we will also add an item to talk about the financial pieces of the bomb Cyclone, and also have Jared Schneider here, our emergency manager, to talk a little bit about our plans dealing with trees and fire over the course of the next six months or so as we get ready for the summer. So it's going to be a busy meeting next week, but our plan is to bring this to you next week. There's not much else on for regular business other than the council's beginning the interview process for the vacancy, but we can make that all work next week. So that's all right, we'll put this on regular business with those additions.
With what the city administrator has just described, is there any particular concern you're about? That all sounds, that all sounds good and appropriate? All right, I think we're good.
Thank you.
All right, well, I want to thank everyone, this has been a couple hours, but we covered a lot of good material today. So we are-
Announcements?
I'm sorry?
Announcements?
Announcements?
Any announcements from the committee?
Oh, Barb?
Well, I just, you know, to round up, I think we all agree that this is a great plan, and just thank you to you for, I'm sure, an immense amount of work. The plan reads very easily, I think people- I think people, laypeople in the community will be able to understand it without any problem. And I certainly have done a great job of addressing a lot of the major issues facing us when it comes to our urban forest management. The only thing, a slight, the, the acronym is a little bit hard to say. And that's the only drawback that I see there, but other than that, I mean, it's a really great job and I do want to thank you.
Thanks.
You said it all.
Okay.
There we go. Do any council members have any announcements? All right, well then, we are adjourned at 8:21.